The Nelson Road District Overlay Review Meeting dated August 12th, 2010. And I'd like to welcome the audience that are here, that is here this evening. Row call, please, Carrie.
Mr. Guy Brain?
Here.
Mr. Dennis Scott?
Here.
Mr. David Connor?
Here.
Mr. Jake Porche?
Here.
Mr. Jimmy Vickers?
Here.
Thank you, Carrie. We've got item three, Explanation of Rules of Procedure. I'll read this in the record. This is a five-member board. It will take a majority of those members present to grant or deny any requests heard tonight. The meeting will be conducted with me reading the request from the agenda. The planning staff will give a presentation and a report, and report their recommendation. The applicant will give a PowerPoint presentation. If someone from the audience has comments, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and nature of your request. The review team will vote on this, on the request following discussion. The vote is final tonight. And I'd ask anybody in the audience if they have a cellphone or pager, if they're just silencing, please. With that said, we'll go to item four. We'll take appropriate action on case ND03-001-10. A request by Lovejoy Partners LLC for a major alternative design request to establish use not permit, permitted in Section 1. The proposed use, uses of, or retail uses in bakeries, catering, and delicatessen services, clinics, drugstore, food service shops, personal service shops, restaurants, studios, and other types of similar, similar uses, and to modify the architectural theme French country to Louisiana vernacular, and on an 18-acre tract located in the northwest corner of Nelson Road and Ham Reid Road. Jennifer Wallace.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brain. The petitioner's property is in Ward 3 in South Lake Charles, and at this location, the petitioners would like to construct a multi-use development that the first phase would consist of four buildings, and those four buildings would have a total square footage of just over thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand square feet of floor space. The design of the buildings, it includes some elements of French country architecture, but we feel as a staff that it's best described as Louisiana vernacular. The petitioners do plan to preserve as many oak trees as possible and incorporate those oak trees into an open space that would be at the center of this development. Once the buildings are complete, the petitioners plan to move their office to this location, and the remaining space would be leased out for a variety of different uses. To complete the development as planned, they need to have approval on two major alternative requests. The first request relates to the uses. In the Nelson Overlay District, we have two separate sections, and this is in Section 1. Section 1 only allows business, professional offices, institutions, churches, and parks. So to do these types of developments, they would need to have an alternative and some approved uses that they would like to have there would be retail uses, possibly a restaurant, food-type restaurants, maybe a Subway, and places like that. The second major request relates to the architectural theme of the development. As I stated earlier, the staff does classify this as more Louisiana vernacular, but they do include the French country theme in their materials that they plan to use, the color scheme. They have some parapet walls that are included, so there are some elements, they're not deviating 100%, but we felt like it was enough that we needed to come to you guys and get approval for this type of theme. And the applicant, in their presentation, they will discuss more of the theme and the uses. The staff recommends that the request be granted with the stipulation that the remaining development comply with all the standards of the Nelson Road Overlay District, or that they receive a formal approval to deviate in any way. And the second stipulation would be that the development is subject to the findings of a traffic impact analysis to be done at a later date prior to any final inspection or certificate of occupancy to be issued.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh... Can she repeat those two stipulations? Yeah, can you repeat the two stipulations, please?
The first is that the remaining development must comply with the requirements of the Nelson Road Overlay District, or receive formal approval for any deviations, and that the development is subject to the findings of a traffic impact analysis. And y'all should have this in your packet, it's on the second page at the bottom.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wallace. At this time, Randy, would you like to give your presentation?
(inaudible) My name's Randy Goodlow.
Yes.
725 Kirby Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana.
Thank you, Randy.
Appreciate y'all seeing us today. On behalf of Mr. Dub Henning and Lovejoy Partners, I'd like to make a little brief presentation to y'all, kind of explain to you the, the scope of the project, exactly where it's located, hats set on the site, and then we can talk about, I'm here to pretty much talk about the architecture, the vernacular, the architecture, and those sorts of things. When we, if you, Mr. Matt Redd here is, is who has been contracted with Lovejoy Partners to do the leasing for the, the real estate end of it, so if there's some direct questions on usages and that sort of thing, he's here to answer some questions as well, if you have any. With that, what I'd like to do is, I'm sure everyone is pretty much familiar with the, with the property itself, Nelson Road, Ham Reid Road, which would be on the north-west corner of that intersection. As you, as you can see in this aerial photograph, that there's a lot of beautiful oak trees that have been on that piece of property, of course, for many, many years, and when the client came to us initially, you know, that was one of the design stipulations that he, he set forth for, for our programming efforts to maintain the, as many of the trees as we could. That would be practical, and believe me, we've gone above and beyond trying to save some of these trees, and we'll continue to do that with the way some of these are going to be near and close to some of our buildings still. So we're going to some extraordinary efforts to maintain, to keep some of these trees. So that's the existing, as you can see, we're, we're bounded on the north by this drainage ladder over here, and on this west side, with some residential on the backside with a wooden fence that, that's contiguous, I mean contiguous to us, but is completely on that west side of the fence. What I should kind of show you here, too, it'll be evident in some of the other photograph, I mean, from our renderings, but the 400-foot, I'm shaking here, overlay line is about right in here. We have a little over 215 feet from the overlay line to the, to the backside of the property, so there's a little over 200-foot buffer between the two. And this will show you an artistic rendering of the proportion of the development we're talking about, as, as, as it's shown on the 18, approximately 18 acres. We have located, one, one thing this isn't, this isn't showing, we're gonna have, and of course, the traffic study's gonna tell that, tell that to us, too, is we're gonna hopefully have another entry off of, off of, on the Ham Reid Road off this backside over here. But main entry right here off of Nelson Road, like was previously stated by Jennifer, we have four different buildings. And what we, what we have done is, in this main quadrangle, we have a, a cluster of beautiful live oak trees that is what we've tried to maintain, and there's another cluster of them back into the buffer, that's a, a, next to the neighborhood in the back, that we're gonna be maintained as well. We're, we're observing the 30-foot setback on Nelson, and we're gonna have some, certainly some landscaping amenities there as, as required. While we're sitting on the site plan, too, Lovejoy Partners is also contracted with a professional landscape architect as well, and this, this, this whole project is, is really gonna be of quality, character. You know, with the, with the Overlay District, it's, you know, we've done a lot of strip centers in town, we've done a lot of, you know, retail, commercial, office buildings, and this is, this is very, very different kind of a project than what you see, just like what we did up on Nelson Road where Cape Posse is, you know, that's a strip center. This is not a strip center, this is a, a development. I more or less kind of relate it to how Bayou Pines is, you know, it's, it's, it's a development that you go into and experience. Here's just another view, an isometric view of the development from the, and here's a little bit closer up, a view of the site where you enter. We're gonna have a fountain right in here, some signage, some low signage here, and of course, there's some, here's some other big live oak trees that we're saving. This one over here, as you can see, is really close to the, the, this building here, and we're, we're doing some special things with the landscape architect to try to have as low impact to that tree as, as possible. Here's another view from the south, looking to the northwest. Right now, you know, Lovejoy is, is really in a very unique position, and I, I don't see that often in, in, in my business where you have an owner that's pulling the trigger on a project and really doesn't have any tenants but himself in, in his development. So he, he is, he is stepping out there and making a huge commitment on a roughly $5 million project, and, you know, build it and they'll come, and that's what Mr. Redd's job is gonna be, is, is filling this thing up. But we feel that with the quality of the design, what we're, what, all we're having right now are, you know, just, it's, it's gonna be a shell building until the tenants start showing up. Here is the typical elevation of one of the buildings. Talking about the Louisiana vernacular as opposed to French country, you know, French country is, I guess, that, that's something that could be debated by, everyone has an opinion of what French country really is. Early on in this project, in battling with that French, French country theme, what we found, and I'll show you some, some earlier renditions of what we had done, and going by the, the roof slopes that are required, and, and some of those things, the proportions of the building were just getting, just wrong. I mean, architecturally, they just weren't right. And it's one reason we, we went to some of the architectures that you're seeing here, and also because we have this, this courtyard of trees, and the way this development is located is that we're trying to, to give this feel for community, and, and we wanted the scale to be proper with the way we have this thing laid out. So we feel we really have captured that. We have a, a couple of the end units will have the capability to have two-story units, the middle of the units will be one story. And we have big overhangs with wooden brackets, some parapets. The roof slopes are meeting the requirements, except for the, the, the little awning, you know, the awning in the front, which is, in order to, we, we're gonna need to maintain to get some signage above the, the, the walkways, so we kept those to a minimum, and, so that's what you're seeing here. Everything is gonna be brick, even the light color you're seeing in here, it's gonna be a, a brick wash is what it, it's kind of hard to show in a rendering, but everything's gonna be brick and wood construction. Here's another different building, similar in, in contexts and nature. Gonna have real nice metal columns. White oak building, one of the other four buildings. This is looking back from the backside of the development, looking towards Nelson Road. This would be looking from the park that's in the center, looking back towards Nelson Road to the, to the southeast. This is the building that, that Lovejoy will occupy in their space on the corner over here. You see, that's the only one that we have an interior build out in right now. And that's this one. Two-story look, that, that's that big live oak tree in the back, we'd be, have a patio in the back for it. And there's another street view. This would be the entryway coming in with the fountain and signage. Excuse me. Couple of interior views, and this is just some, some renderings that, that Mr. Henning wanted for marketability of the spaces. Here is an earlier version, and we put this in here so you could kind of see what we were up against with the, with the roof design in, in of itself. In getting, in any development, whether it be retail or office, we have to leave enough ceiling space, clearance space, and then by the time we, we get our plate line set to do it, and this is, this is not a six-on-12 roof, you can see, if we would've gone to a six-on-12 roof, our roof lines would've been way up here, and it would've been totally out of proportion with what we were doing here. So we, we just wanted to include that, just so you can kind of see what it has evolved from and to. And we have a little animation, you can see. Oops. Now I'm losing it here. Well, I'll let him try to, here we go, here's the animation, kind of give you an idea of the, the drive-by, what it would look like. This is going from south to north along, in between the buildings, along the park to the left, entryway to the right. Yeah, a little bit too quick. Okay, this is just gonna loop, it's the same two little, little renderings. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to, to answer any questions.
Randy, thank you for the presentation. I'm gonna open it up for a discussion. Do any, team members have any questions they need to ask, or like to ask?
Mr. Brain?
Yes, Mr. Connor, go ahead.
Randy, on the, discuss the issue of the French country versus Louisiana vernacular. You know, in, in our ordinance, it talks about the criteria for French country, and, let's see what page this is on, as I'm understanding, appreciating what your, your design, your, your design changes from French country are, there's eight different architectural design guidelines. If I'm understanding correctly, there's, the roof pitch is, is pretty much the main guideline variation that you've made.
Right.
The others do, help me understand what, how you satisfy those other, are you, am I putting you on the spot here, I've got it in front of me, you know, it seems like French country, other than the roof line. Help me understand what that means versus...
From what you have here, I mean, in our, in our viewer estimation, much of what you see is French country. A lot, you know, when you say French country to a lot of people, they think of a residence, you know, and, and to do a residence in, in French country is one thing, but when you're doing a commercial building, whether it be an office or a retail building, is much, much different. You have to pick up the elements of, of what, you know, what the French country intent, I think, is what y'all wanted. You know, and that's what, the way we interpret it as well, is that, you know, you didn't want a metal building, you wanted something that all four sides were gonna be finished, you know, brick and wood, and, and really keeping in, in line with the, with the finishes that, that, you know, you would like to see, other than what's further north on Nelson, which, which are metal buildings with a nice facade on the front, and, and the back is totally ignored. So, yeah, we feel that most of the finishes are what you're gonna see in here, whether it be from the light fixtures, to the, to the brick, to the wood brackets, you know, to the shingled roof with, you know, concrete ridge caps, and some of the parapet walls that you see are in keeping.
Well, in, in your professional opinion as an architect, do you see this as more of a French country with a variation, or do you see this truly Louisiana vernacular?
Probably a little bit of both, I would say, you know. And here, again, we, we've had some discussions with staff and, and Mr. Vickers, and, you know, especially in our, I mean, it may be something the parish wants to take up at some point, as far as, is not tying down what you want to see. I mean, I'm not sure you want to see French country all the way up and down Nelson Road from, from now on, and leave, you know, some, some, I think he has a good set of guidelines as far as what the intent and what you really are looking for there, which is a quality finished product, and, and more of a, you know, different kind of scale of what you're, what you would see even down the street in some cases, from what, you know. Does that answer your question? I hope so.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Anybody else? Go ahead, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
From what I'm looking at, I don't know if I'd compare it to Bayou Pines, not that they're a nice place, but I think what, what I'm looking at tends to be more like a River Ranch type of feel, and, you know, it's got a little more to it than just some office complexes, so, you know, I understand, it looks great, and I did see all the conceptuals a year or so ago, and I think it come a long way from the original to now. I don't even really, if you'd see all of it, I don't think it's even the same. And the next thing, when we keep talking about the quality of the project, the quality of the project, I think, is, is, is the issue, but it's the quality of the project compared to how it relates to the neighborhoods around it. And that's the intent of the Overlay District, I believe, is to make sure that it really ties into the houses that are around it, the houses that sit behind it, and I think if you were driving to places like Dallas and to River Ranch and stuff, you would see these type of homes that sit around this, so that they're not like just two separate entities, it's kind of a blending to where they can actually work together. So, you know, we're gonna discuss a whole lot of other situations, but I think it's meeting and looking like what it's supposed to in that neighborhood according to what we see here, and I do think it's beyond anything that this parish has put together as far as that type of, you know, situation where it's well-rounded and, and meets the needs of a lot of things. So, you know, as far as the look of it, I understand the roof pitch, being in construction, if you put the roof pitch that it requires in here on those buildings, they would be in a, they would be a nuisance in there. I just don't think of a match.
It would dominate...
The terrain.
The skyline and, and the building itself, it would be, it would be so out of proportion, out of scale. You know, it would be different if you could, you know, what people realize, scale and proportion in architecture, and, and what's really appealing, even like in, in the garden district of homes, when you see homes that, that, that you just drive by and you look at, and they look nice, well, they're four feet off the ground to start with. You know, well, that's a difficult thing to do in any kind of commercial development, you know, to get that scale and proportion, so if you get down to grade, and then you're gonna have a six-on-12 roof, scale and proportion, especially on larger buildings like we're talking about, you know, this, you know, these are the square, and, and that's why we did, went to multiple buildings, too, to keep that, you know, we didn't just do a big old strip of a building.
Right.
We, we broke it up, which is a, more of a cost to this owner, too.
I'm gonna ask one more question, and you don't have to answer this, you might want to let somebody else answer, but according, well, to start the question, right now you got 33,000 square feet of floor space. Are you saying about half of that is gonna be retail, is what you're asking for? What is the, the ratio? Do you know that?
You know, I can ask Matt Redd to maybe address that as well, but...
The second question that leads, and that's just to lead into my question, and so with that number that he's gonna give us, do you think it would be fair to say that's what we're gonna look at at the rest of these proposed, you know, and Matt might want to answer that? Are we looking at basically 50/50 every time y'all come, they come back and want to maybe change to keep it with what they're looking at? And my question is only because I'm getting at that road that's gonna go down the backside, is that gonna become a service road on the backside of these, of this neighborhood, which 250 feet is a very good buffer? And I'll follow it up with some landscaping beyond that one cluster of trees to really buffer that, so I don't know. There might be a lot of questions at one time, but it kind of rolled.
Well, you know, I won't speak for Matt, but I, you know, personally, I think, well, as far as knowing what the development's gonna, what the tenant's mix is gonna be, you don't know. I mean, until, until, and that's what's kind of exciting about Lovejoy Partners pulling the trigger on this, without, you know, pre-leasing anything. He is gonna welcome, and that's why he wanted the, the ability to also, you know, go after some high-end retail or sandwich shop, like what, what was said earlier, or if it, if everyone, you know, if he gets, he fills it up with office space, so be it, he's gonna lease it up in office space. Speaking, Mr. Redd?
Matt, would you like to come up to the microphone and kind of explain...
I'm coming, they gotta do something.
What's your businesses you're gonna target, or...
I'm Matt Redd, 1424 Ryan Street, NAI, Lake Charles. Fortunately, we were hired, hired by, by Mr. Henning to, to take on this project, and it is something that unlike, I've, I've ever seen Lake Charles, or come to Lake Charles. Very excited about it, you know, the walking paths and the fountains, I mean, it just, it doesn't exist. I manage Bayou Pines, and it's, it's not quite Bayou Pines. And Bayou Pines is not. You know, as far as the tenant mix, we, we don't have one. Dub's taking on, you know, doing something that people just don't do, and, and building this without, without a, a tenant right now, and that's what we've been hired to do, and we're trying to do. And we are marketing this thing towards a lot of different high-end retail, medical space. We've been contacted by a couple of smaller tenants here locally that, that would, would be interested in it, phone companies, hair salons, things of this nature.
Who would...
Go, you have the floor.
Who would be able to actually answer the question if I was to want to know about landscaping that buffer zone, all of it, now instead of waiting later till you phase it in, in order to begin to get that stuff growing?
And where are you talking about then?
Talking that whole 250 feet deep where just that one little cluster on the far west side, that, that end of that, besides that one cluster of trees, to talk about starting some of that landscaping where there'd be some bigger trees, giving it time to grow up over these next five or six years while this all kind of begins to progress.
You know, I can't speak for Mr. Henning on that, per se, but I, I'm sure that he would be open to that possibility. He wants to do any, anything and everything he can do to make it, like I said, the quality development. You know, we're already gonna be doing a lot of landscape work in, within the, the area as well, and if, you know, if we needed to plant something along that, that fence line, I'm sure we could look at, you know, work with our landscape architect and see what we could come up with.
I'm just looking down the road at these two-story buildings on that 250-foot buffer. Now, they do have a nice fence back there, but once you get a second story up there, if you're just now planting some bushes and trees along there, you're talking years before we get some growth, so it's just something you might, and I don't know exactly where we're gonna come to in a few minutes, but that would be one of my concerns, that sooner than later we start that process.
I wish I could get the site plan back up, but don't forget that within that, that development on that west side where we have some parking, that we're gonna be required to have a certain amount of trees and, and landscaping that's gonna be with, of course, within our development, but it's gonna be on our western border, which there's nothing beyond that. So you will, you know, so, you know, we're gonna be required on, right in here to put certain-sized trees, certain-sized, you know, you know, hedges or whatever, and, you know, that will also be an additional buffering that you're gonna have, instead of just planting something right up against that fence.
Well, I'm not even so much saying right against it as much as spreading out in that buffer to give some sound barrier, to give some visual, you know, different things to help just prevent lighting, you know, people seeing over there. Service road, when that road gets built, that would probably become more of a service road than this front entrance as far as going in and out, I'm just assuming.
It'd be like the road at Cape Posse.
And that's just something I'm bringing up for, just for some thought.
And, and, you know, we will certainly...
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Anybody in the audience have any questions, Dave? Like to address us? You can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Brian Artwin. I live at 1705 Swan Drive in Crestview subdivision.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Not super prepared for this, just got a few questions I'd like answered. Number one is, we came about, knowing about this meeting, kind of by accident, and quite concerned about that. I thought anytime we... I thought anytime we changed a, from C-one to C-three, which is what they're requesting, it should be publicized for this meeting so we'd have more people who would know what's going on in their neighborhood around them. And I guess I've been familiar with this particular overlay district since its inception because Chuck Cleckley had, can, talked with us back in, I think it was oh-four, when all this was being discussed. I was the homeowners' president for a number of years in Crestview, and I'm still with the board. So, he pretty much sold us on the idea that what we saw here was pretty much what it was going to be. And if you look at, on the overlay district, the boundary plan here, whatever you guys want to call it, it's pretty much color-coded, showing what's what. So, we were pretty happy that we would not be having to go to these meetings and feel like having to arbitrate on what was going to be developed in our neighborhoods that's going to impact our property value. This particular section obviously is C-one, and that's what we'd like to see it remain is C-one. So, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Artwin. Dennis, you'd like to address them?
Yeah, and I just want to speak to the first thing, you know, you know, and I appreciate all the hard work y'all doing trying to keep your neighborhood the way it is, but on accident is not actually the word I would, you know, I went out there as a courtesy and made sure y'all were aware that this meeting was going on, even though it was in the newspaper and on the internet. I did not want to leave anybody that had a stake in this out as far as being heard and the things that went on. So, and, and I want to make sure that we can do anything we can to accommodate all the neighbors on every side as well as the, the people who own the business, because that's what we all are, as people, and we just want to try to all get along and make sure that we make the right decisions. So, I appreciate y'all showing up, I really do.
Can we get an answer for my question concerning the publicizing these meetings?
Yes, sir, we can do that. Mr. Vickers?
I'm not sure. What, what's the nature of your question? I'm sorry.
Is your concern is why there's not a, why a sign didn't go up? Okay, we can address that for you.
This meeting, which I thought that's what happened when we had, when you're changing in Peace of Land. I know we have one homeowner here, when he wanted to do something on his personal property, he had to post it and for people to come talk about it here.
Okay, and let me respond. I, I think that we're not changing the zoning here, understand that. What this is, is it's an alternative review request. It's a major alternative review request, and that's what's provided for within the ordinance. And we do not place any type of sign or public notice sign for that. But we do, and it's not required for within the ordinance, but we do run a legal advertisement that's been run announcing this public hearing, so you could have public input into this process.
Okay, I'm, I'm maybe confusing, I'm sorry for that.
That's all right.
But their request is to change from C-one to C-three, is that not?
No, that, that is not a request.
Okay, but you look at the plan here, what C-one or Section One of the plan calls for, what type of businesses can be located in that Section One, which is that particular parcel of land, it's, this is marked C-one, so will this land stay C-one?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, they would be allowed to do things, what's the difference? Can you explain the difference of C-one and C-three?
Well, C-three is certainly a higher commercial use, and the C-three is within the zoning ordinance. This C-one that we're talking about in the Nelson District has a specific set of uses that are approved. And you're correct, if you go back and you can go within Section One. But what happens is, is in the alternative use, you can apply for additional uses to go in there. It's never been done before, and really, that's what the public, the purpose of this request is for, is to see if they could put possibly a restaurant, maybe some other commercial uses within this particular development.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Sounds like we're stretching C-one out a little bit.
Well, I mean, that's the whole purpose of having the hearing here nice, to get public input on it.
Right, so your answer to the, because you're not actually changing the zoning, you do not have to publicize it, is what you're saying?
Well, there...
Publicize it by having a street signage or something other than what, what you're saying, you did the American Press maybe or on the website?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's no, there's no provision in here that it has to have a sign per se because we're not rezoning anything. The zoning is actually remaining the same. The request is, is to add some additional uses and to change the architectural thing.
All right, thank y'all.
Randy, just so you, to address you, Randy, I mean Brian?
Yes?
I did, as Mr. Scott did, I went to, you know, I knew it was advertised in the paper and also knew it was on the website, and it's also all over Facebook, but I went personally and walked the streets, talked to a lot of neighbors, made sure that they knew about this meeting because not everybody reads the newspaper and so forth. So, I did, I made, I put the effort out there also to let people know that we were having the meeting tonight. So, I just wanted to address that.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you, Brian. Yes, sir, just state your name and address for the record.
Bill Ferguson, fifty-three sixty-one Sparrow Lane in Lake Charles, and I am also from Crestview and currently the president of Homeowners Association. And we didn't get a chance to wholly speak to any, any of our homeowners because we didn't find out about this until two days ago. Again, we consider these things to be very important, that the parish spent humongous amounts of time and money to establish this whole overlay program. And to come tell the, as when, all the meetings we had, to tell us that this was so important, that they were going to actually set down an entire ordinance for it, set down guidelines, met with us. In fact, we can go back and pull the two-thousand and two minutes of the meetings, now you can go online and get them. And we've talked to Chuck Cleckley since then. Chuck said absolutely, he says, when I met with you all, we passed that ordinance because of the destruction, well, the damage done to Crestview when they took the land from the homeowners for the five-laning, and y'all's concerns where now that y'all were going to put this overlay in, what kind of businesses would go in? And he says, I feel certain, and this is what he told the jury when y'all came up with the C, when you came up with this plan, C-one. And that's what it says on, on the cover of the ordinance, it says, C-one ordinance. That it would be, they would do this, and he thought he could sell this to his constituents so he wouldn't have any more fights. And we agreed to this. We shook hands over it and said, fine, and that's how we left it. Next thing we know, we're making changes. There were comments made that if we put this, the reason why this ordinance was so wonderful is because we could go ahead and zone it and after we're about any more changes, it'd be zoned as it was. We said, okay, and it was set as C-one. Later, I think it was two thousand and five, they decided to come up with some additional changes that, that they could do as part of this plan to maybe enlarge or whatever. But it seems like every time we turn around, all the changes and all the things being made for business, we never hear anybody say, why don't we do something for the residents? In fact, because that's what this was set down for in the beginning, to keep the characteristics of the neighborhood intact. Those are the exact words of the police jury when they set this down. And every time we turn around, something else is being changed. These, this is not in keeping with the neighborhood characteristics. I talked to several people that live over there on, on Moulin Rouge, back all over the streets in there, they hadn't, had no idea this was happening. And there was, and one lady told me she says, she could not believe it. And when I showed her the paper, right off the police jury, what all was going to be done, she said, a restaurant. We don't come home and smell cooking all night long, every night. I said, well, I know that, and I said, you know, not long ago, they tried to put a restaurant in Lake Charles behind a subdivision, and the people on the other side protested, and it was moved. Yeah, I mean, that's not fair to people. You don't come home and smell it every night, and the only break you get is when the wind shifts and somebody on the other side gets to break for change. That's not fair. If they're going to build an establishment, let it fit like you all said in the beginning, strict guidelines. Y'all put it down on here, it's all in y'all's words, strict guidelines, C-one only, those were the words in the beginning. That's what we signed on for in the beginning. Things have changed over time because people come up saying, I want more, we want more, we want something nicer and bigger. I was told today that, when I talked to Chuck Cleckley, he said, have you seen the plans? I says, no. He said, it's, it's, they spend a lot of money, it's very nice. I asked, well, that's great, I said, Disney World's great, very nice, but I don't want Disney World there. Even if it was a C-three, I don't want in there. It's not fair to the people, because once you start making changes, who are you going to, who are you going to stop and tell somebody else they can't have it? When do you say, okay, you can have this, but not a restaurant? When do they say, we're going to leave the oak trees, but the next buyer comes along and cuts them down, says, I don't want them? Or the next buyer of this mall or this setup lets it go shabby? Businesses, if you go through Lake Charles and you look at how many businesses are failing in town and they're ghost towns in places? And we're talking about an economy that's not doing real well, yet may boom for a while, and when it falls, at least people take care of their homes. That's a problem in this country now, people losing their homes. People sinking all their money into these residences to their one deal, and they look at the ordinance, they say, well, I can live with this, but then somebody comes along, wants to change it. And they have no say. I could have, we could have packed this place, people from, from, I live in Crestview, they told me, they said, we didn't know in time. Couldn't make the change at five o'clock in one day notice. And that's why a lot of people aren't here, because no signs. And a lot of people don't read the newspaper. If I read the paper once a week, I'm lucky. So, that's the only place I would have gone.
I'll just address that and say that the, the posting of the sign wasn't something intentional. We, we did it by guidelines as far as the advertising of the meeting.
Well, I understand, but I think it would have been fair to get more people here if they would have known, people, if people can't be here if they don't know.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Ferguson, I, I just want to let you know on my, from my standpoint, I wasn't on the jury when the overlay was designed and brought into effect. The only, and, and I understand it, and I understand the projects, and I understand the future, and I understand development. And I just, I mean, there's, there's no, no other way to say it except that things do change. Thing, things progress when you have economic development, things have to change to allow that economic development.
Oh, I understand it.
And the, the development that I see that's going there is just, will enhance everybody. You, including, I live, you know where I live.
Sure.
So, I just don't, I'm trying to just, so I'm trying to see it from your point, and, but I, I'm not disagreeing with you. You have a legitimate complaint.
When you bought your house?
Yes, sir.
And you moved there, did you look around and say, gee, I hope there's a restaurant in front of my house one day? Or did you pick that house and properly, because you said, this is nice, I'd like to live here? If you'd had forethought and knowledge...
I probably thought both, Bill.
There are a lot of people, there are a lot of people, I can tell you, if I'd have known that, I wouldn't have. If I could have had the future, to look in the future and see what's going to be in front of my house, that's why all I had was the, the, basically the parish had set down a zoning and with the laws worth time and hoped that the politicians would honor their words. That when we sat and met with them, and they said, this is what we've got for you guys. And Chuck Cleckley said, I believe I can sell this to my constituents, and he did. Oh, sometimes, why do we even have this if we're going to keep changing it?
Economic development's the only answer I have for it, Mr. Ferguson.
It's not fair to the public, though, I mean, we have to have citizens.
But I will also say that when I bought out there, it was twenty, twenty-four years ago, I've lived out there. And it was a two-lane road, and, and Crestview was rice field, and woods were everywhere, and it's just, you know, and unfortunately, in my case, and I'm not just, I'm not, you know, I have Nelson Point apartments I look at in my backyard. They came along, and they started clearing, so I, I understand what you're saying. But I just, and I just wanted to clarify the overlay district that with, sometimes things change. That's the only thing I can say about it, because you have economic development, people want to develop. I mean, you have Dove Henning here that wants to invest five million dollars in a project that's going to be unbelievable for, I, I feel like, in my opinion, for the neighborhood, for your neighborhood, for my neighborhood, for everybody that lives around there. I think it's going to enhance our property value, and that's just my opinion. I just wanted to address you on that, Mr. Ferguson.
I say, I've heard that a lot of times, I could take it in many places, where they built things like that, really nice to time, twenty, thirty years ago, they looked beautiful, they don't look beautiful today. And subdivisions around it, people have just pulled out and left. And as people move out to the suburbs like they moved out to our suburbs, they did that to get away from exactly this. So, what happens is the businesses wake up one morning, and they say, where'd everybody go? Let's chase them. And that's what happens. And what's going to happen, people are going to say, all the traffic, all the restaurants, the smell of the food, everything says, I didn't, I didn't buy this for this, I'm out of here. And then property values start going, as, as everybody gets out. I understand change, I know there's got to be change, but sometimes change, you can't change and yet not follow the commitment that you put down. The one thing about it is, there was a reason why this was set up in the beginning, and it was for the characteristics of the neighborhood, number one, that should never change. I don't care how much money, I don't care if they want to put, again, if they want to put IMAX theater, wonderful. It brings a lot of people, it's well-built, it's a lot of great entertainment, and so what? And some people might say, I loved it in my backyard, I wouldn't. So, we have to sit down with the, with what we want to do for the public and for the people who are there first. And I read that in many articles where there was people who were told, when businesses want to do something, it's in the minutes. Nope, I'm sorry, but the residents were here first. But went out off of that same, same deal. Now, we're told, ah, you got to expect change. Other people told, no, it's okay, you're there first. You, you have to play this game straight. I believe that. If you give, if you give somebody your word, you shake your hands on it, that's it.
You had said earlier that you didn't feel this was in keeping with the neighborhood characteristics?
Not from what I've read.
Okay, but, but it sounds, as I'm, as I'm listening to you, it sounds like you have a problem looking at commercial development across the road from what you were saying earlier, which is, you agreed on the C-one, I'm just trying to understand, you have...
We were guaranteed limited, very limited, very strict, is what we were told when it first started. And that's starting to drift away. It's gone from four-hundred feet now, where every time we turn around, people want more, more and more and more distance. My question is, like, for instance, they can leave a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer, oh, that's fine. It's very expensive property, how long is that going to stay, two-hundred-and-fifty feet with nobody there? And if times get hard, they say, we got to, we have to put something back there, we're going to fold, then what do we do? You know, we, we say, okay, well, it's either that or we have a ghost town there, we'll go ahead and put something there. Those things can happen. You know, businesses can come and go, they buy and sell like they want to. People, when they invest in their homes, generally stay where they are unless they have to move for work to be transferred.
But this is currently zoned for commercial development?
It, it is, it's zoned C-one, it's in a C-one zone, it was originally put down. I know they can change things if they want to, they change that later.
It will look the same, even if it's, you know, just C-one, this development will look the same no matter what type of business is in there. You will still be looking at a C-one development, is what the point I'm trying to make.
Well...
From what you said earlier, keeping with the neighborhood characteristics, I feel that this...
No, from the original use, though, they want to change the different use, different architecture.
Right.
And I said, that if we're going to, if we're going to keep talking about changing architecture, then why did we start this? Mr. Mr. Vickers, you called it, we need to have a uniform theme when this was first set down. That's gone, there's no uniform theme anymore.
Like Mr. Goodlo said earlier, the French country is very open to interpretation. You could talk to five different individuals and they would give you, it's very subjective.
It might could, but then, but there, right now, isn't, there's no theme still because they said they want to change this Louisiana design. Well, I guess you can call whatever you want to, I mean, if you want to call a baseball or football, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Fossey, Mr. Connor?
Yeah, first of all, I guess, probably on the issue of the public notification of signs, you know, I'm hearing that we, we've met the minimum standards on notification, but at the same time, I, I do feel like the public is used to seeing a certain kind of notification. I would, myself, I prefer to see this room full of neighborhood, of, of folks from the area who had something to say, that means you care. So, I, I don't disagree with you, with you guys on this, on this sign thing. Parish says it met the minimum standard, your guys are, the public is used to seeing a certain kind of thing. So, I understand your, your concerns on that. On the issue of, of C-one, it was brought up a little earlier, this, as I'm appreciating the ordinance, this really, this kind of a, of a project really goes back more to a true C-one, it's not C-three, goes back to a true, more of a true C-one than what Section One of the ordinance for Nelson Road Overlay District says, which allows for a commercial development of, of, of different variations. You know, I talked to Mr. Cleckley today, and I'm going to try to say as close as I can to what he told me concerning those days back that you're talking about and where he's, his interpretation of that today. What, what he said to me was, he, what was laid out in the Nelson Road Overlay District was a framework, and that was his word, framework, for what happens here in the future. But he also said that this body right here, this, this review board, which is a, kind of a, a, a segment of the entire Planning and Zoning Commission, would, would be set in place specifically for these kind of conversations. Meaning that you can't write in all the specifics of what's going to happen in a future development anywhere. You cannot cover everything. So, as things change and as things come, come forward and, and develop... So as things change and as things come, come forward in development, this board is set in place to cover those things where you've got nothing written and left for interpretation. So you can't say that this Nelson Road Overlay District laid out, laid out the specific groundwork for what happens in that, in that district in the future. Or this body shouldn't, we shouldn't need to be here. That's what this public hearings are for, which is why I wish this room was full, to get a lot more input. So we're here now, looking at a, some sort of a variation on what the C1 calls for, what the Nelson Road Overlay District calls for, what the spirit of the Nelson Road Overlay District was put in place for, was to protect the integrity of, of that neighborhood for future growth, which meant both residential and commercial growth. And so now we're faced with the issue of, does this developer who comes here fit that characteristic in that, you use the word "theme," does it fit that theme? Theme is not specific design, theme is a theme. So does French Country fit the theme? Yes, it does. Does Louisiana vernacular fit the theme? You can argue it does or doesn't. Does this kind of development, which is more specifically C1 than Section 1 Nelson Road Overlay District, fit the theme? You can argue either way, that's what we're here for. But not to say that the Nelson Road Overlay District specifically lays out exactly what's to be built in that Nelson Road Overlay District in the future. There's a few other issues, I think, that were brought up that I think have no, no place here. As far as the economy goes, it's not our place. We don't, we don't, we don't make the decisions on what happened, what's happening in the economy. If a developer wants to put his money up, it's not for us to say. If he's going to lose money, that's him. We're not weighing in on that, whether this is a viable project or not. This is, we're weighing in on whether this project is suitable for this particular district. So I don't want you to think we're not thinking about and addressing some of the things you say, but some of them don't have any, any place in our decision-making process, so.
Well, my only request was this, that, again, going back to the fact that, like Mr. Brim said, when you moved there, and I moved, I bought there in ninety-two in Crestview.
I was eighty-nine.
That's right, I was there in ninety-two, and there's still cows back on the backside of our property right there. The, but it was residential, it was R1. We knew when we moved there, my wife and I moved there, we invested in that spot because everything around it was R1. We said, "We can move into a residential area." To be among homes, friends, families, whatever. If they want to put a fire station, great. A school goes in, well, that's not bad, we can live with that, we need to have schools. But the idea was to keep a community and a neighborhood. Most neighborhoods, where you start putting businesses and commercial businesses, don't become neighborhoods anymore. I'm sorry, again, drive through Lake Charles and take a look at every corner. They've about run most of the good neighborhoods out of town. And the only ones, where they tried to put businesses up, ooh, they put a stop to those, real quick. I know because I talked to the people that fought the fight. They said, "We're not putting up with that." Because we have our neighborhood residents, we don't want to smell the restaurant and everything like this. And they acquiesced to their request. Why? Because their residents, they were there first.
Yes, sir.
We're residents of nature, we're the citizens, we expect you all to stand up for us. If you come up and say, "We're going to allow certain things down here," we expect you to use your best judgment and to give it to us as you told us in the beginning. Not change it, not ask stuff and say, "Well, these guys, they put out more money than these people, this is going to be really nice." I don't want to hear those things. I don't care how really nice it is. Does it destroy the integrity of the neighborhood? Again, I can bring a lot of things, now, they're very expensive, very nice, look great. What do they have to do with keeping the neighborhood? Does a restaurant in there do it? Does a bakery, does a deli? Is a oil loop, well, we've got to oil change. How about a gas station? How about a real nice-looking gasoline station? I'm just telling you, you can, you can start pushing those limits to the end if you want to stretch it out. That's not fair to us.
Okay.
The residents were there first.
Okay.
Mr. Connor, you see how it's going?
Well, I'll add, I think your argument makes sense if this was an R1, about you being there first as residents. And that, whatever you're comparing to in the city electorals, you could be talking about an R1, I don't know, and I don't even want to know. But if you're talking about an R1, and they don't want commercial, for sure, that's a legitimate argument. This is a C1 with commercial allowed already in the ordinance. So we're not talking about who got there first, we're talking about what's allowed, what's the best use of the land. So when you, when you move into a rural area, you expect farming to go around. When you move into an urban service area like, like this is, then you expect that you're going to have somebody to come along and say, "God, there's a good piece of property for some sort of commercial development." So that's not being restricted by, by this particular ordinance and this particular best land use, so.
No, again, it's just, just to keep up with the characteristics of the neighborhood, as y'all said, with putting this plan in. And I think you talk to most people, it does not. It wouldn't be what I want in my neighborhood if I'm buying to keep up with the characteristics of it. You can have people coming in all hours of night buying stuff, who's going to be there? Who's coming in and out? Twenty-four hours a day, people coming in and driving behind this place, they can have a buffer zone, you can't see? Oh, that's nice. At nighttime, who's back there? You get the same thing with safety. I've seen people get their, get their requests turned down because the business next door said, "We don't want to have that trailer parked here because, you know, safety." And they said, "You've got a fence." Yeah, but kids like to climb fences, that's what they're there for. And they said, "You're right." And they threw it out because that's a safety problem. The man deserves safety. So we can go all kind of points on this thing, but when you, you have to understand, again, the integrity of the neighborhood is what y'all promised us. That goes back to the original, to the original shaking of their hands when we set this up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Anybody else in the audience have any discussion? I'll ask Mr. Scott.
Just a few quick things. You know, no matter what kind of developments are going next to who, whether you're trying to now put apartments next to a house or more houses next to a residence that's worried about the drainage, that they're going to, you know, now have to worry about how it's going to drain into their property. Because back in ninety, nobody wanted Crestview draining all that water through the neighborhood I live in. And that's the problems I still deal with, is they don't like the fact that all that water floods their houses worse than it did before it was built. That's okay, that's, that's part of the process, and that's still the part, as a police juror, not as this board, that I keep trying to work through. Y'all have an issue on your north side that is a continuing issue that we try to work out for both sides to try to make the characteristics work, but more to be hospitable and how does it all work together? Nobody's ever going to be a hundred percent happy. But what we have to look at is, I believe, the characteristics fit as far as the look of this facility. Three out of the five of us live within the same distance as the Crestview residents. And, you know, I haven't had anybody else just say, "Don't put that where I live." So I have to look at the overall and not just the few. My phone number is published, it's printed, it's easy to find, people know where I live. You know, they have to speak up and not have one person as a voice, you know? And that's where we have to also consider some things. But when we get to the characteristics, and this is where Mr. Ed might come in finally. There are some things that I would like to know as far as, when we look at this, and this is what they're requesting, they want these things to happen in there. And the one thing that it clearly says on here is restaurants, and then it says alcohol beverages consumed on premises. There's a lot of nice food places where people eat and drink and, you know, move along. But there's some places where people eat at lunch and drink until one in the morning, once the sun goes down. That doesn't fit in the characteristics of the neighborhood, in my estimation. Now, do we have to pass this without stipulations, the way this is stated? Or can we make some discussions on, okay, anything in alcoholic beverages closes by eight P.M., you know, if they put it on this development? Is that some, is that a stipulation that we can put on something like this?
The Planning and Zoning Board does it regularly.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you could come up with your own stipulations, specific stipulations for this project.
My stipulations are going to be, because of the neighborhood and because of what Mr. Cleckley and whoever else has decided, we're trying to help the neighbors, we want it all to mold and fit together. Well, I don't believe that molding and fitting, which I think the intent was to have, from my understanding, professional offices, doctors, all these things that kind of close down as the sun goes down, people are gone, the neighborhoods are, you know, quiet and back to normal. So one of the stipulations, and I don't know what point I need to make a motion or how this is going to go, but one of the things I'd like to see is, anything that serves alcohol in this facility, I would want to have to be closed by eight P.M. And I wouldn't want to ever see that changed or brought back up, or, I don't know if you can set it in stone, but that would protect the characteristic that I'm worried about. I really, truly would like to see by nine, or, you know, if they're just serving food and it's a Subway, you know, they close at ten o'clock or whatever. But to have an establishment that can stay open till one o'clock in the morning, serving alcohol, I'm not going to be for that. And I would hate to vote against something totally, and I'm not saying I would, but if we're going to help the characteristics of the neighborhood, right now, there ain't nothing staying open, serving alcohol on Nelson Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Wallace.
Just very quickly, before we, we go any further there, I do want to let you guys know that in Section 2, which is south of Hamreed Road, restaurants with alcoholic beverages consumed on premises are allowed by right. So if you put that stipulation here, south of Hamreed Road, if a development comes there, they won't have that, that restriction. I just wanted to point that out. And then one other thing is the definition of a lounge in the zoning ordinance is where the main source of revenue is from alcoholic beverages. So we do differentiate between restaurants that serve food with alcohol and lounges. So I'm not sure if that helps you at all, I just wanted to point those two things out before we went any further.
That helps me, but that's, what if we do call a nod in on them? I mean, I don't really know how you differ.
I believe that that can be tracked. Your sales and yeast tax, yes. That's how they differentiate right now with smoking and non-smoking.
Well, as you move south on the other side of Hamreed, the demographics of the areas change and the things that are going on. And a lot of those homes that are built along there, the developer would buy them and tear them down. He ain't going to buy Crestview and tear it down. He ain't going to buy Deep Woods and tear it down to make room for development. But on the south side of Hamreed, they'll buy any of them up in a heartbeat and tear them down because that property is worth more than the houses on the south side of Hamreed. So right now, we're talking about the north side of Hamreed, and the characteristics of those three neighborhoods is what I would like to protect as far as, you know, I would like to see, making sure that by eight or nine o'clock, I'm not having to get phone calls and, "Hey, man, they're up clubbing again, it's all night." The noise, the trash blowing all through the parking lots. And I know that's ordinance issues and Sheriff Department and all that, but stipulations and looking down the road would solve some of the problems that we generally deal with every day as a juror. That's my opinion, but that's something that I would like to see put in this stipulation.
I'm going to let Mr. Redd comment on that.
Addressing the timeframe, we certainly are not looking to put OBEs down there. And you are correct on the, I'm very familiar with the difference between restaurant and lounge, and that is heavily watched by the, by the school board and on the tax side of things. The best example I can give you of what we would put there would be much like, we're not negotiating with them, but would be much like DeAngelo's. It's a restaurant right in the middle of downtown, right in the middle of the neighborhood. And I think their, their time is about eleven, and that's something that we could certainly live with.
Thank you, Matt. That's what I was hoping, type of restaurant establishment would go there.
You know, we're not looking for, for a lounge or a bar.
Right.
They open to two. But any, any restaurant of, of its, of its, it's worth its weight in salt, doesn't close at eight. I mean, and we would need to, I think that eleven o'clock on the weekends would certainly be feasible.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to name names, I don't want to name restaurants, but there are some out there that they make a lot of money during the day, but they make a whole lot of money at night, and that's just the nature of it.
That's not, that's not the nature of our development.
I understand it, but some of the ones I'm thinking of, they could afford to go out there because it would be a very nice little place for them to now put another one that's smaller scale, upscaled, I can, you know, because they're already, the same people are going. So it's, I'm just looking out for the characteristics like we're speaking of, of that neighborhood. And I wouldn't want it to end up being a midnight-type deal, and you still got all the things going on that, that happen there. So that's all. Thank you, then.
Mr. Connor.
I definitely wanted to agree with Dennis on this issue with, with the, these restaurants staying open. But I just want to clarify, too, if a motion comes to the floor to pass the, pass the, these various exceptions, that that needs to be stated as an amendment to this at the time of the motion, so that we can weigh in on that. If not, we'll put the motion before the floor, and then an amendment can still come once the motion's on the floor. But we, that should come at that point, so.
Right, you'll need to make a motion to amend the stipulation. And then that'll, that'll be addressed by the board. And then when it comes to a full vote, it'll be either with the amendments, if the board passes your motion to add the amendments to it.
Ed, should I get, should I ask for a motion to accept the theme and additional uses first, or with stipulations?
Well, if you, if you vote now as the request, it's without any additional stipulations.
Okay.
I would think you would ask if there are any additional stipulations and vote on those separately from what's already been presented.
The stipulation that y'all want to add is?
You can discuss for a minute and find out exactly what you would like the stipulation to be with regard to alcoholic beverages.
Do you want to have a set time on it, or? If a restaurant like DeAngelo's goes in there, you can't really say, "Eight o'clock, you shut down." But if you have a, I hate to name a name, but you just, you know, a place that sells sandwiches and beer and they're open till midnight, that's a different type of place. So just, I need some discussion on how y'all want to make the motion or the amendment.
I think eight o'clock is very early for a restaurant, like Mr. Redd said. He did say eleven P.M.
Well, I would, I would oppose that on the restaurant side of it, as far as shutting it at eight o'clock. But on, we're going to have to, you know, be clear on what type of business. If we're going to put an amendment in here to shut it down, the alcohol, by eight o'clock. Matt, would you want to, you want to weigh in on that?
Well, again, there's a, there's a huge difference between a restaurant and a lounge, and that is regulated. And so, you know, if you get into what type of restaurant, I mean, we could be here for weeks trying to figure that out.
Do, just a, just a question. Do you have any plans of putting a, you know, seeking a lounge for that area?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, I mean, you could, a lounge is defined.
Right.
You could make a stipulation that you're not, I don't think you're allowing a lounge by the request to start with. So, I mean, if you pass it as it is, a lounge could not go there.
That's my point, right.
As defined by the request now. If you want to put additional restrictions on the type of restaurant or when that restaurant would need to stop serving alcohol, you could do that. That would just apply to this development.
And that is regulated by the amount of sales in that, within that establishment.
All right.
But you don't, you don't have to outlaw lounge now, and a lounge would not be allowed as defined by that.
Well, how about I quit nitpicking and I stay with alcoholic beverages on site? If you're serving alcohol, I'm willing to say eleven P.M., seven days a week. That would be, I think that's fair, and I think that's still, but that's restaurants. I don't want the weekend till one or anything. I'm, I think it'd be fair, I would lay that we add, so I'll make a motion to add this stipulation. So I would like to make a motion that we add number three to our stipulation, that it would be to any business in this facility, in this development, would have to shut down by eleven P.M. any day of the week that it is open. And that would be my motion.
All right, Mr. Scott, first I'm going to take a motion, ask for a motion to accept the theme, and we'll get that out of the way first. Take it, do it in separate motions.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman, that, that we modify the architectural theme from French Country to Louisiana vernacular.
Then do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the second motion, we will, I need a motion for the additional uses with the stipulations. And I'll read the stipulations in the record, am I correct, Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, what I would recommend is, is that if nobody has an objection, that we approve the proposed uses, less than accept the alcoholic beverages consumed on the premises. And then that way, we can still deal with that independently. And if nobody has a problem with the other proposed uses that would be added, then I would like that, make that a form of a motion.
Okay. That is our motion on the floor. I need a second?
Second.
Question?
Go ahead. Let me make sure I understood what you just said. You're talking about us taking out the, the restaurants, alcohol consumed on premises for the sake of this motion we're talking about right now?
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, let's, we did it right now, then we, we'll deal with that.
I got it.
So we're approving, so the motion was all of these uses with these two stipulations?
Is that correct, Mr. Victor?
With the exception of alcohol beverages consumed on premises.
Okay, that's the motion on the floor, and I have a second. Okay, is there any, any discussion? Okay, is there any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, now we need to take the alcohol, okay. We'll take, I need a motion to, you want to make the motion?
It would probably be best, just suggesting, it's already restaurants, and we have restaurants defined. We know what those are. Just put, you can make a motion to have restrictions on any restaurants or any business here, including specifically restaurants, that would have to close by eleven P.M. Because you already have restaurant defined, lounge defined. I mean, we're not changing the definition of things. But the restaurant allows alcohol beverages to be sold on premises, as defined.
We do need to add that back.
I need a motion.
Right, no, that's, your motion now needs to be to add back restaurants, but...
With the eleven o'clock stipulation?
With the eleven o'clock stipulation.
Seven days a week.
But you want the stipulation, I assume, to apply to all businesses?
All businesses.
Right.
All right. Does everybody understand that motion? Or do I need to read it? Okay, well, the amendment will be, the motion will be for restaurants serving alcohol will, no later than eleven o'clock, be able to serve alcohol.
No, you've got to say that they're going to be allowed now, back in this motion.
It would be simpler, we may have to backtrack just a second.
Yeah, let's do it.
Just to accept the stipulations that have been offered and add a third stipulation that all businesses in the development have to close by eleven.
Okay, still got to add back restaurants.
Go back and accept it as proposed, which includes restaurants.
We've already passed it. We've already passed it without. If we're going to, if restaurants are going to be allowed, we've got to add back restaurants. Okay?
But you're adding, that's fine. You're adding back the...
Adding back restaurants and we're putting a restriction on the time restaurants.
Eleven, eleven P.M. You want to put a restriction on the time of any business.
Okay, we're adding, but we're still adding back restaurants and then putting a restriction on any establishment that serves alcohol, okay?
Okay, better?
Give it a shot.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion that we allow restaurants in this development and that any business that serves alcohol or does not serve alcohol, close by eleven P.M. That is my motion.
Okay, with that motion, we have a second by Mr. Porche. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. And with that said...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, so move, second? Second, we are adjourned.